I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, there's a little change to the agenda from usual. I actually have some comments I need to make at the first of the meeting, so. You ready? So I received actually a couple of emails from Chuck Severance. Chuck has been leading up the effort to get Alpine Tunnel paired road. And so Chuck is a member of the U-Pass Iron Goats Jeep Club, and this is the information that he's provided. So the contractor will begin bringing equipment to Pittkin in the wall site tomorrow, June 18th. Work is expected to be finished sometime in September. Basically, Forest Road 839, Alpine Tunnel Road, will be closed all summer. There's actually a map online. The link is on the website, so you can go and see. But basically, the Alpine Tunnel Road will be closed from Tunnel Gulch, which that's where the water tank is, from there up. There will be no access, period. So, the, one of the primary reasons that they're doing this is a concern for safety. They're going to be doing a lot of rock work upon the wall, and there's a concern that some of the big rocks could come down, something could happen. So that was a decision that's been made to close the entire road, basically, from Tunnel Gulch forward anywhere else, up over Hancock, Tamichi, all that will be closed. The complexity of trying to open-close, open-close option for the road was deemed to be too complex and very expensive to staff with flaggers for the entire summer. So they decided the total closure was the best option with the funds are available, with the funds able to be used entirely on the wall, not paying flaggers all summer. Information is available on the town's website. There should be a link on there also to the Grand Mesa Uncompatriated Gunison National Forest. If you click on that, under Alerts and closures, you will see that this is coming from the Forest Service and enforcement. This is a federal mandate. So if someone violates it, that will be a federal offense. So, to let everybody know, that's going to be what's going on, starting tomorrow, it sounds like. Next, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the community of Pittkin for allowing me the privilege and honor to serve as the mayor of the town of Pittkin. I am formally announcing my resignation as mayor effective immediately.
Eddie, I would like to say publicly, thank you. Give me just a minute here. Pro-Tim means temporary. That's me, Mayor Temporary. So it looks like I will be filling in for the rest of this meeting tonight. Is it, is it on?
Another was on.
Is it on? Okay. It's on. Thank you very much. I will repeat myself as Mayor Pro-Tim. Pro-Tim, that, that's a, one word means temporary. So I will be filling in for the rest of this evening. Next item on the list is the town attorney report. Attorney, do we have any report? Clay?
Mr. Mayor, I have no reports.
No report. Okay. Council Action, we move on to approving the minutes for the May 3rd work session. Has everybody had time to review those? And are there anything that you would like to? Point out grammatically or by way of punctuation or? You know, whatever. Are we happy with our minutes for the May 3rd? Work session between the zoning board and the Board of Trustees?
I only have one question for Sarah on page five. At the middle, we have my name and 17 PF and 656. Not sure with it.
Yes, I, it looks like I was going to re-listen to that. I believe that what happened at that time was you read from those sections. Do you have any different notes?
I don't.
I'm just going to delete it.
That's fine. I wasn't sure what it was.
Notes myself, you actually, I went down and I didn't, and I missed that one. I apologize.
Any other discussion? All right, then I would entertain a motion.
This is Gerard, and I move to accept the minutes as corrected.
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the May 3rd zoning board and trustees joint work session. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, we move on to the next, which is the May 20th, May 20th regular session. And I think I had one note on there, but I'm not sure it's of consequence. Anybody else have anything?
I have some, on the first page, the, the paragraph that's highlighted, it says motions to enter, that becomes confusing because the end of the sentence ends with motion to enter made by Ramon Reed. So I suggest move made by Ramon, trustee Ramon Reed, right after the word motion.
Will you please say again which motion you're referring to?
The, the first motion that. Otherwise, you get to the end of the sentence, and it has a variance requested, 1016 State Street made by trustee Ramon Reed. That's why it gets confusing.
I see what you're saying.
Secondly, in the last paragraph, before regular meeting, the end of the sentence says, for the record, I would like to see added there, it was asked by the mayor, because that's what the rest of this refers to. At the end of that paragraph, should be a sentence that says, all members responded that the discussion remained on topic. That's what it is asked.
All members?
No, after me.
I do have one more on page five.
Mr. Reed, will you repeat the sentence that you always have added?
The sentence should read, all members responded that, that the discussion remained on topic.
Thank you. Would you have one more?
Yes, page five. Little below halfway, the paragraph that begins with trustee Tom Giff.
Yes.
The fourth line, fifth line of that paragraph quotes that in no case shall the variant be a minimal easing restrictions. The, the quote that Tom was making is in no case shall variants be a, be more than a minimum. So after the word B, just add more than.
More than, yeah.
Thank you.
Are we good then?
I'm good.
Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the May 20th meeting. As amended.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item 62, discuss with possible action, adopting ordinance 2024-6, which would amend ordinance 20, is that supposed to be 13-3?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2013-3. I didn't think we had a 2011. Okay, now, I have a question. When you amend an ordinance, is this an addition to the ordinance or does this replace an ordinance?
I think Attorney Buckner might be able to explain that a little better.
Did you, did you catch that, Mr.?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor just replaces the portion of the ordinance that's being amended. And so in this case, it specifies, you know, where it would be amended. In this case, I think the, there's additional paragraphs and Sarah did the, I guess, the other portion of the, or the other part of the ordinance that I provided. I didn't do it in time to make the packet.
Okay, so just for clarification, this amendment adds to the ordinance, it does not replace it?
Correct.
Yes, it's not, it's not a replacement. It's just the amended portion of it.
Okay, let me see if I can find what I have here on that, because I got a whole stack of this stuff. So this is titled ordinance number six, series 2024. Which amends ordinance number three, series 2013. Sarah, could I get you to read through that?
This is the town of Pittkin, Colorado, amending ordinance three, series 2013. The town of Pittkin, Colorado, ordinance six, series 2024. Whereas Colorado provides statutes operating municipal and act regulations to promote the health, safety, and welfare, and improve order comfort and convenience for the municipality and its occupants thereof. And whereas the town of Pittkin adopted ordinance three, series 2013, and where the county board of trustees is desirous of amending ordinance three, series 2013, for the health, safety, and welfare, and to the order comfort and convenience of the municipality and its occupants thereof. Now therefore, be advised by board trustees of the town of Pittkin, Colorado, the Apple Towns, Pittkin, three, series 2013, is hereby amended as follows. The town of Pittkin intends to regulate all camping within the county of Pittkin and to prescribe penalties for unlawful camping. Our busy campers must be property setbacks for structures, per current town of Pittkin zoning code. Camping is prohibited on any property that does not contain a fully functional seating system. Campings prohibited in excess of length days on a property with a fully functional seating system. The town verifies that this ordinance is necessary to the immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety in such effect, and be enforced from after the final publication of this ordinance. Introduced, read, and adopted on its third reading or published in the best of country plans by title only on this subject they have seen before.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, if everybody assimilated that up here on the board, I would entertain any discussion.
So Mr. Tim, my first question is, what has initiated this amendment to the ordinance?
Repeat the first, what is the?
What has initiated the need for an amendment to the camping ordinance?
Well, what has initiated the need is, I guess, what I would call an influx of individuals who wish to camp with their campers or their RVs or whatever. And we basically, with our ordinance 2013-3, only regulates the camping of whatever on public property. And the camping on, on private property is becoming increasingly an issue, and I brought this up some time back with our, our local Forest Service representative, that we will continue to see an increase in the amount of campers. And he stated at the last regular town meeting for May 20th, and I took, I took a special note of this, that while the previous ordinance that he had was specific to private property within the town of Pittkin, he has seen towns that have not contemplated the idea of camping within town thoroughly enough. And what happens is properties get inundated with movable temporary housing that becomes nontemporary very quickly and is, becomes increasingly difficult to deal with. And so while you say, well, what about right now? And right now is important, but we have also the future to look toward. And so you ask what prompts that? I think current situations and future looking out for the town. This is our job as trustees, not just for the here and now, but for the future of Pittkin. And, and so the question becomes, do the citizens of Pittkin, what, what is it that they want to see Pittkin look like in five years or 10? And, and so I think camping ordinances, along with, there'll be some other things coming along, I'm quite sure. If we're going to maintain what we would like this town to be, we're going to have to deal with not just this, but some other things as well. So that's what prompts that.
So can I ask the question of who initiated the town attorney to put this ordinance together and put it on tonight's meeting? On the agenda?
Let me back up. All I brought was the notes, I mean, the minutes from last month's meeting. So I don't not bring the agenda, but last month's agenda was discuss with possible action, which is 2024-5, temporary occupancy of recreational vehicles on private property, and that continues on still. So I can't say that I can back up far enough to give you an answer to that.
Okay, and that's my concern is that at the last meeting, the RV ordinance was brought up, and we tabled that until we could have the workshop next Monday.
And we do have one coming up.
And it is coming up next Monday, and then we have amending the camping or on the agenda. I'd also, I'd also like to state that there are a couple of board of trustees that either have family members or their own campers either placed on properties without OWTS system or in town right away. And I would hope as a board of trustees, we all will lead by example, rather than leading by hypocrisy.
Amen.
And you have entered into an area that this town would really like to maintain some enthusiasm and some zeal on. And that is, and I, I can't start naming off different stuff because this person, oh, I know that one, or I know this one, or I know that one. We have across this town, multiple issues with people's stuff, whatever that might be, and I won't go into details on that because you're all familiar with this, that resides on town property. So I do know that there is a list, and I do know that there is a plan to send letters, and I don't know if we've started on that at all yet or not.
Just that nothing is sent except in response to one specific complaint.
Okay, so, but I do know that it's in the works. Not sitting in that chair, I'm not quite as knowledgeable as I would like to be at this very moment. But I do know there's plans in the works to get letters out to these people to inform them of, as you brought up, camping partially or totally, or parked partially or totally, or stuff of all sorts of various different things that are on town property that we would be very excited as a town to see a lot of that mitigated and cleaned up. So, on the one hand, yes, your point is absolutely correct. On the other hand, it is a problem that we're going to have to address. And we can only do things, as you know well, things only go so fast in Pittkin. But we need to get started on that as well. So probably this town ordinance on, on camping is one of those things that hopefully will lead the way into some other things as well.
Mr. Ma'am, so Tim. You mentioned all of the, the list, and there's been a list of many, for many years. So it's kind of interesting to me that we're starting with camping instead of a lot of the other things. But that is off topic, talking about the camping. And I, we need to work on that work session a week from tonight. But I'm not inclined to table because we have a lot of people here interested in this very subject, I think. So perhaps we should proceed with some.
Some discussion?
And Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could speak up real quick, I did provide a different, there is a different possibility for an ordinance as well, that I think includes language that is a lot more appropriate for the current town situation, including camping on private property and being able to use existing holding tanks, et cetera, that address the health, safety, and welfare issues that the town is looking to regulate, but also that allows for a pretty liberal use of RVs and campers on private property that strikes a really good balance. And that just wasn't, I didn't provide that in time to town staff to get that on this meeting, is what I believe is what happened. So I would just suggest that instead of going forward with discussion on this particular ordinance, because I don't believe that, it, it, I don't believe that it fits, you know, Pittkin's needs or you know, the, the public's interest in, in having an ordinance or amending the current one. I just suggest you table it and allow discussion on my optional proposed draft at a work session at a later date.
Mr. Mayor, Pro-Tim, I make a motion that we table this topic until a future date, until we receive the updated ordinance that Mr. Buckner is talking about.
I think, I think it would be appropriate to at least let the rest of the board make comments instead of just one.
I, I still, I still take exception to the crowd. I don't know if the attorney can tell. We have a large crowd tonight, and I always think that's good. We, so I would take an exception to Mr. Pianalto's motion, just so that we could hear some input from people who may not be here next Monday. I don't, you know, since we have people that can't develop. If the board is okay with that. It would give us more input for the next work session from maybe some people that might not be here.
Okay, I get to decide this, it looks like.
May I make a quick comment before you?
Yes, please do.
Just, just real briefly, so a little, I do have a little background on the drafting of the amendment. The town of Pittkin and the current situation that it has been dealing with, with regard to camper that has been in place for almost 13 months at this time, without the benefit of water and sewer. And the idea behind drafting the amendment was to be able to address that situation and prevent other situations where there might be campers parked for extended periods of time without the benefit of water and sewers, so kind of as a stopgap measure, while the board discusses and develops a more appropriate all-encompassing camping ordinance for the town, which could take several months. Thank you.
May I, could I please again encourage the accommodation of the crowd? And if you have some comment?
There's no second to it. All my motion, if I, if the town can speak, and I have a couple of other comments.
Okay, Mr. Pianalto withdraws his motion. Okay. Mr. Pianalto withdraws his motion. I do not want this to run on forever. I'm gonna put a 13 minute timer on it. It's a good solid number. We're gonna start up here with Ramon.
Yeah, I'd just like to address one question is why camping and why now? And it's pretty simple. It's a safety and health issue. There's, Pittkin does not have a sewer system. I think everybody understands that. Unregulated camping in downtown Pittkin is a health issue. We have no way of knowing where campers are dumping their waste or which is water, what they're doing with their trash, anything else. Because we have no enforcement mechanism to keep an eye on things and, and deal with it. And, you know, I think that, that we need a, a bigger ordinance than we have that we're all pretty young this summer. And this proposal by our town attorney is to give him something that can be enforced now or as soon as it's published. And then we can have our work session discuss it. Look at what is appropriate for Pittkin and move forward.
Thank you, Ramon. Ed?
So two, two comments, two questions, I guess, or comments. On the RVs, campers must meet property setbacks for structures per the current town of Pittkin zoning code. I guess I don't understand why even want to have an RV must meet setbacks. My real question is, what's next? Are we then going to tell our citizens that, oh, sorry, your flatbed trailer has to meet setbacks as well? Or your vehicles that are parked in your drive must meet setback. Where do we stop? Once we open this can of worms, I'm afraid there's not a stop to it. I don't understand why for a camper, we need to have setbacks that we have set for structures. And my understanding for the setback on structures is primarily snow load. We don't have RVs in Pittkin all winter long with very few exceptions. Second comment or question is on C, where camping is prohibited on any property that does not contain a fully functional septic system. I understand the desire to have it connected to an OWTS system. There are a lot of RVs out there that are self-contained. And the affluent and the black water can be put in tanks and hauled off. And we're limiting those people to saying, well, sorry, if you don't hook up on OWTS, you can't even camp your, your RV.
Thank you. Am I allowed to add additional information to that? Okay. So the number of places in town that have a legitimate RV port on their septic system, as far as I know, is just one. Anybody else is dumping into a septic system is something they've added, which you're not supposed to do. Or you've pulled back your lid and you're dumping over the top. And, and that's not, that does not fall anywhere within things that are doable within Reg 43. So when you say camping is prohibited on any property that does not contain a fully septic system. When I saw this, my first thought was, well, this is not totally explanatory because you camp whoever beside your house, they're coming inside your house to use your shower and your toilet and your tanks, unless they're going to go with self-contained until those things are full. And so that's one aspect that has not been, and so Mr. Buckner in his thing here that we should table this till we can come up with a more concise package is a good idea. But however, I do want, so are you guys down here? Can we let some people out here talk? Okay. Anybody in the audience have anything they want to say? We got a microphone, please step up and is there one up there?
Yes.
There is. It probably will have to turn.
I'm in the south. I'm the lightning rod that they're talking about. Why does all that? I've allowed someone to camp on my property. It was a worker here in town in a local business. And there was a complaint filed August of last year about my property. It was an anonymous complaint. And when brought up, somehow it got on the agenda for the March meeting. And when that was brought up, I immediately offered to install a septic system from that person. The town attorney, in his wisdom, immediately brought in the facts and saying, well, we don't know about the structure. But that could be an issue as well. So tagging on to Ed's and Alto's comment, what next? If, if a septic system wasn't good enough, and now we're worried about this man's structuring that's in. There's a lot of other people that have campers in town who built structures around them and built structures onto them. Are they going to be the next targets? There's people in town who have dry cabins. There's people in town who have set up their outhouses that are grandfathered. The dry cabin literally right behind me where I live has an outhouse. Are we now going to mandate that man has to put in his own septic system? I think we've gone off the rails a little bit on this. I offered remedy and I was turned down. There are people in town who are board members who do not have fully functioning, complete septic systems. They have incinerating toilets, and I don't know what they do with their gas line. I don't understand the need for this action now, other than a potential big development. Because there's two board members that have significant conflicts of interest with regard to this property. One of them has been hyper-focused on what I've done along the creek. He became very upset. He became so upset that he started a physical confrontation on the bridge on Sixth Street. Another one, family members stole signs from my property. And this person claimed to have no knowledge and didn't know anything about it. But I had video of him on the property a couple hours before I was going, tagging on the sign, talking and stuff. So I'll be glad to be your lightning rod, but I will not be treated unfairly in this town.
We have to keep our public comments on track. We're not gonna respond to each other's.
Not responding. Hello. Well, I'm loud. I'm not responding to that. I just wanted to clarify something that I think is missing.
So people on the internet, I can hear you.
What? I can't get it to. There. It's not okay. Thank you. Okay. The reason you have to have an OWTS to have a camper is not to hook your camper to it. It's so you have a bathroom to go in, in another building that you can use. If you want to hook your camper to an OWTS, it takes a specially designed and engineered OWTS because the flow from a camper is two to four times more. Well, when you study Reg 43, you can correct me. But anyway, because the potential of a camper arriving with a full holding tank and then hooking up and dumping it all, those have to be designed larger, with larger capacity than a regular system. And so to clarify, we're not, I don't think they're talking about hooking your RV to an OWTS that you've got. I think they're talking about, about him on the property because he can go use. So the RV doesn't have to dump. That's what I think. Thank you.
Okay, we got a few more, three minutes. Jump quick, guys.
I would like to speak.
We've got somebody up front already.
Hi, I'm sorry. Hello. My name's Jim Fisher. And I'm just an old country boy from Missouri. So forgive me. But I'm still confused as to what the hazard is with the campers. I don't think that was ever clarified. Is somebody dumping raw sewage or?
This is public comment and I don't really get to jump in.
Okay. All right. Well, I recently had my water tested and it came back near perfect. So, and that's from an independent place in Missouri. So I don't see where the issue is with this thing or thing. But I'll leave this for somebody else.
Yes, thank you. We have someone online. Who've we got?
Sorry about that. I should feel better. Hi, I'm Terry Wilcox Burke. I'm down on 402 Court Slam. And I have a couple of things to say. First off, I'm finding it a little bit deceptive that we're discussing this, as this was supposed to be discussed at a meeting. There is no ordinance posted for us to read about before the meeting, which is, it just looks a little bit shady, to be honest. So just calling that out, call it like I see it there. Um, we also, I also find it odd that not all board members knew that the town attorney was asked to create a new ordinance to replace the old ordinance that ordinance that we spoke about last May. So that seems a little suspicious to me, but there's another couple of things to consider. We were told last time in the May meeting that there was environmental concern. And that was why we received an email about where we could and could not park this summer. But also it was discussed at the May meeting as a environmental concern and therefore no public hearing or public forum was necessary. So I would just like to know what were the proof that is of an environmental concern? Is there some kind of? We do camp with our RVs and a trailer on our property. And we do not have an OWTS and we do not need one. Our campers are our OWTS. We are happy to provide the town of Pittkin with all of our multiple receipts from all of the hundreds of dollars we have paid to dump and fill up with water. That is, for many of us, that is the best reason to have one of these vehicles is so that you can manage your wastewater. And we have never dumped it in the creek, nor would we ever do something like that. I also just want to point out from the last May meeting that this is not a typical town. And I would, I do not know the exact number. I used to be a full-time resident when I finished college up at Western State back in 2000. And at that time, I think there were maybe 52, maybe it was 72 full-time residents that lived in Pittkin year-round. And most of us were the type that come during the summer when the weather is nice. So I think it's very important that we have more public discussion and more notice about this particular concern. I would love to know how many permanent residents we have now as compared to how many homeowners we have in this town. And I feel like they need to be represented. So I don't want to take up all the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're running out of time. I'm going, Jake, can you be short? We're out of time. But you've been standing there, so I'm gonna let you go to go and then we're gonna quit.
I, I'd like to request on behalf of the residents of Pittkin that the board consider extending the time. And, and I'll follow that up very briefly to each and every trustee sitting in front of me. I would ask that you please make your own bed before you tell the rest of the community how to make theirs. Thank you.
I want to thank you all for your comments this evening. We're going to follow Mr. Buckner's advice. He has suggested that we table this. Ed Pianalto, you want to reintroduce that or not?
Sir, you have, you have a way of reading a motion. Or did you strike?
I just have a motion to table this item until the ordinance can be reviewed. If you want to alter that, I can give you some.
Tell the ordinance, the rewritten ones from the town attorney is provided.
So that's a motion?
Yes, a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I can second this. I will second this motion and we'll see if it falls through the floor or not. So we have a motion and a second by Tom Gibb. All those in favor to table this discussion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
All right. We've fallen through the floor on that. That would leave us with more public discussion, I would suppose. So on that note, I will lead off with a few things. As I pointed out earlier, we have very, very few septic systems in this town that were in any way engineered to accept or permitted to accept additional OWTS from another building or another source. That requires another round of engineering and then it has to be approved and permitted. And so what is being suggested out there as far as camping is concerned, will literally be falling into, you can't include that. Because that's just, that's against state Reg 43. So you're going to be discussing dry camping on private property, looks to me like. And, and how long you're willing to have people do that. And in conjunction with that, I have owned a large RV and I know the size of the water tanks and the septic tanks on those things. And I do know for a fact you can dry camp for two weeks, even with multiple kids. So there are things to be considered. I, you just heard me agree with what Mr. Buckner put out. We may as well just wait for the meeting. But I see that lots of you have things you want to say. So let's keep it short. I don't want this meeting running late. I think we can cover all we need to do, but we'll give this a few more, a few more minutes. Mr. Barnell, please step up.
Chad Barnell. Yeah, I have a couple of questions for you personally. Do you have a family member that has an RV dumping into a non-finished septic system at this time in the town of Pittkin?
This is public comment, Chad.
Well, you don't have to answer it.
I don't have to answer.
I also see Mr. Ramon Reed having a camper set up in his driveway, or I'm sorry, town property next to his driveway. How, how can you guys like both want something to pass whenever you don't do it yourself? You do exactly what you're trying to tell us not to do. It's okay for you, not okay for me. Anyways, but my main point was when you come to town, you've got an RV. I'll have six RVs in my driveway next weekend, Fourth of July weekend. Are they all going to be hooked up to the septic? Absolutely not. They're all going to come inside. No rules against that. Dry camping, they'll be hooked up to nothing except power. Dry camping, coming in, taking a shower, brushing your teeth, having the best of time. Hopefully will be annoying everybody personally in town, driving our razors through town, having the best of life, enjoying the summer.
Thank you, Chad. Who's next?
Cindy Hatwens. Yes, we brought our camper into town. I have two young girls that are going to be coming up. I have two young girls that are going to be coming up uh, for about three weeks and they will be staying in it. Using the stuff in our house, but they're gonna be helping me clean. For a fifteen and a eighteen-year-old, there's nowhere, they can, they can't afford to go rent a place. And so they're gonna be staying and, and also safety reasons, they will be staying behind our camp, our cabin, where I can be keeping an eye on them and what's going on. So that's why we brought our camper, just because we have two young girls come in and help me. So, but campers fully self-contained. So that's why we have our camper here and we will be taking it home at the end of the summer. After the girls leave, I won't even be used. But it'll just take time for my husband to get it back home.
Thank you. Who would like to be next? Well, I think we've had, yes, I think, come on up. I think we've had lots of questions that will um, maybe do us some good here when we do have this uh, work session. So I appreciate the input. Go ahead.
Um, I was on a walk the other day. I saw a dumping station up at campground. Is right, okay, that was basically my question. Thank you. I was gonna offer that as a solution, but.
Hi, Lyndical. I think a lot of the comments, um, I just want to reiterate that you need to get to the root cause. I don't think anyone, let me just take a public comment. I don't think anyone wants raw sewage dumped in town. Show your hands. Who's So I think we need to feel respect, root cause. You know, when we're doing work session next Monday, to really get down to what it is. Cause I think you had a lot of great comments. And I don't want them to be misconstrued that the town thinks that wet camping is okay. No one thinks that.
Thank you. I'd like to wrap this up, guys. Well.
Yeah, I turned it off. Ginger Guy, back again. Um, what about this um, workshop that's gonna be happening though? Is that if you guys are getting some voting tonight, what happens to that next Monday? Next? No? It was still a work session. So what are you actually trying to vote on tonight? Because there was a motion and then a negative.
There was a motion to table. So we have, or get.
Okay, so you're not gonna table it? Then you're voting on something and there's no work session? Or Monday? What are our options here?
The op, the option is, is that we postpone tabling for just a long enough to let a few more people have a little more say.
Okay, yes, that's why I.
That's what Ms. Jarre over here.
Zoom in if they're not.
Yeah, so I, I hesitate to answer questions from the commenter, but
so sorry.
There you go.
I had another page. Um, so at the March meeting, there were two of the folks I discussed who actually voted um, that I was not in compliance and I was sent this letter. Um, I would like for those two people to recuse themselves and need future votes with regard to my property because of their confidence and interest. I would also like to further I was sent.
Okay, then. Here we are once again.
Mr. Mayor of Pennsylvania.
Yes.
Do you want me to make the motion to table this uh, agenda item until um after the work session? We may decide at the work session, well, we can vote, but I don't want to go have a special meeting or just next month's meeting, but I now make the motion that we take, if we feel like we will listen to them to uh, table the motion. Uh, I make the motion that we table this item agenda on the agenda until after the work session.
I will second. Okay, I have a motion and I have a second to table this agenda item until the official work section on the, what is that, the tenth? No. Twenty-fourth, that's the one. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Okay, um so now item six-three says discuss with possible action approving the doc, job description of the town clerk slash secretary. Now, uh, uh, does this stuff go out to everybody? Can they read all six pages of this?
Every item that is being discussed tonight is online for public review prior to attending the meeting, including this job description.
I read this job description twice. I was amazed. Anybody on the board have any comments on this job description? Do you like it? Dislike it? You want to make some changes? What?
Yeah, the meeting document.
It says meeting. I'm still.
Alright, any comments from the board?
Mr. Mayor of Pennsylvania. I haven't just received this today. I haven't had time to read through the whole thing. You know, yeah, I don't see some levels that I'm going to back, you know, problems, but I think that's, I don't know, really, too.
Mr. Pianalto?
I do have a couple of comments, but it is a very detailed job description. A lot of responsibilities for both treasurer and secretary. I would suggest that both job descriptions be split out, one for treasurer, one for secretary. Even though currently our town clerk does both jobs into the future, the town clerk may or may not. So I'd recommend splitting it, at least the treasurer and the secretary out separately. The other, other comment I would make on any job description, especially when it is as detailed as this is, is it can be construed that it's so detailed that there's nothing else that those two positions would do. So at the end of every job description, I always include other and other duties assigned by the board of trustees and the mayor.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, so when I was reading through this, yes, go ahead, Sarah.
That is on page three.
You're correct, I missed it.
Okay, so the part I wanted to say is that, um, so you read through this, you get through the first three, one, two, three pages. Uh, which have to do with the um clerk, I believe. And then on the fourth page, we hit the title called treasurer.
Right.
And um, I thought that was, to me, that was like, well, okay. We, we've got we've got a split here.
And, and it is, it is split within the total but, but the, the title, the title on it is town clerk slash treasurer.
Well, we could so you would like that to say, uh, town clerk? And then on the next one, we get to the treasure part, say job description treasurer? Or something to that effect?
Yeah, that's because, because I know right, Sarah does those jobs. And I don't tell the town clerk, you'll always be there.
So historically, for all time, it's been implemented by
A dual, a dual role.
It's always been a dual role, uh, for the per treasurer. Um, if he was like the documents to be in two separate files, that would be a very easy thing to fix.
We didn't look to the future.
Hi. I, I like the way you split them out uh, the way they currently are. I just, I just break it up because I don't know, we'll always have the one person do both or not. Right now, I'm like, is this job description?
It's kind of scary.
There's a lot of them.
Jerry, you have any thoughts?
Yes, I, I also haven't had time to really peruse or study this. But I find it very verbose and especially for the town of Pittkin. Surely, we don't need it this detailed. And as long as we can, which, which is already in here, that, that for other assigned duties. I, I think I'll reveal myself.
Well, I, I understand that it is verbose, but it's so um so like the, the first sentence before the comma is, for example, prepare zoning board of adjustment meeting agendas and packets. And then it goes through the details of what all that might be. And, and, and then you go down to the next one and performs follow-up activities resulting from, and then goes down through what all that might mean. And so it is rather verbose, but it, it just has bullet points. Uh, so I, I understand what you're saying. I also understand that if you're gonna write a job description, well, you know, maybe, maybe it is too much. I don't know, but I don't feel like really it is. I think this is very indicative of what our town clerk treasurer responsibilities are. So um, Jared says she has not, Jared says she has not read all the way through it yet. Ramon says he's not looked at it in its entirety. So that's half of us that have not completed looking through this. Um, personally, I am not inclined to vote on something that only half of us are fully informed on and and some of that might even be questionable. What are your thoughts?
I'm, I'm perfectly fine to give it more time for a way to review it in its entirety. Obviously, I read it fairly quick. Didn't digest it all because I didn't see the, the possible.
So you want to make a motion on that? That we just?
I will make, this is it. I'll make the motion that we table approving the job description for the town clerk treasurer until all the board of trustees have the ability to review it in its entirety.
This is Jared, I'll say.
I suppose I should ask the question, is there any discussion from the group here? But I don't think that that's really necessary. No one looks like they're jumping up. Okay, so at this point, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of tabling this until we've uh, and push it down the road one more time, till we all have a chance to take a look at it and um come to grips with whether or not it's too detailed, too verbose, or whether it's all the points with explanations following them. Um, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of tabling this for the next time, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Oh, I love this one. Discuss with possible action addressing boards on Main Street boardwalk. Now, once upon a time, we had a, a man here named Gary Winjet. Now, I like Gary for several reasons. And one of the reasons I like Gary is he would show up with the lumber. I don't know, you know, he, he showed up with it. I suspect the town paid for it. I don't know. I would help him cut it. And then he would go out and he would pull up the old boards and he would put down the new boards. And if he needed help, I would go give him a hand. And so we about every other year for several years replaced broken rotten boards. Now, Gary's gone. Um, so I do know now from the post office downstream past Charlie McDaniel's house till we hit Fourth Street there. That boardwalk needs some work. Now, I'm not opposed to work, but I'm opposed to buying the lumber. So um, vote with possible action. I will volunteer my time, but I will not volunteer the purchase of lumber. That stuff is expensive. Treated lumber is not cheap anymore, guys. And after it is put down, it needs a coat of super deck on top of it. Seal it up a bit. It'll last longer. That's my input, but it's board discussion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor of Panama, the person that asked to put this on the agenda, I don't see the people here that approached me, but I already had, I, I hallelujah, I'm walking the streets and sidewalks or whatever. I'm hanging outside. But, yeah, I'm thankful for that, but um the boards in question, and I, and I, in, in looking at this, there are two different kinds. I think there are those that are like in front of your property, and I'm not talking about those. I've walked those too. What I'm talking about are the, I don't know if anybody's here that remembers, this was from a fundraiser. Um, I don't remember if it was PHCA, like many years ago, many years ago, they sold boards. You could have your name inscribed on those. Uh, but here, you mentioned Gary Winjet. How, how many years ago did Gary? I don't know how many years ago was it Gary approached the board? Uh, that the town council about removing some boards that were so rotten, they needed to be taken up. And those were from the fire reception, from the fire department to the post office. Those boards were taken up. Uh, Jesse and Gary and I, some of the volunteers maybe, took those up all to the dump. It was about a hundred and ten dollars, I think, to dump those boards. Um, but that got rid of it. Now you can't tell where those boards were. It's the weeds or the grass and the dandelions have grown up. You can't even tell that was ever there. And um so it was my recommendation that we they're on-town property in front of, most of them were in front of Charlie and Diane's fence. But those boards are terrible. They are a liability. There are screws and nails sticking metal to trip over. I almost did myself. Boards are broken. Um so it would be my recommendation that we do what was done in the past and is remove the rest of those boards. They have been there many years. They've served their purpose. I do not believe they are repairable. That's mine.
So you're suggesting remove the boards and replace them?
No.
Just remove them?
Just remove.
Go to a grass walk?
That's what we did with, between the, between the fire, fire station and the post office. Those were all removed and all the nails, they used a uh, magnetic, whatever you do, magnet to pick up the nails that came out. They did a fine job. But that's, that's my recommendation, that they be removed. They've served their purpose.
So you're, you're, so to clarify, you're suggesting that from uh, the old cafe there that I'm working on, from that point on down to the hotel, we remove that sidewalk and let it be just a grass walk?
Yes, it's where, uh, it's wherever, it's wherever the names start, and I believe it is downstream from the building you're talking about. And then it ends right where Charlie and Diane's fence ends. And if I, it, it shouldn't be like it, like the other half that has already been done. I just think it's completing the project.
Ramon, you got any thoughts on this?
You know, well, I'm most familiar, of course, with the post office. And it has its own board rather than the boardwalk. Even that tends to be problematic at times and we have to replace some screws and whatnot, but you know, from that, you know, I in the last month or so, I walked. I've only a couple of times, I guess, just going from the post office to the town hall. And yeah, it's there are boards that are dangerous, I'd say.
Okay.
So one of the things I think we I might suggest is that we uh, refer this to PHCA. And since they were in evidence prior apparently, see if they're interested in you know, restoring what's in now or don't want anything to do with it or.
Well, that would be before my time, so I don't know about that. Do you think the PHCA would still? Well, so we would we would have to ask them if they're still interested.
What wasn't the PHCA that sponsored that? Because I can't remember. I know it was a fundraiser, like my parents' name. You you could buy a board with your name on it, but my parents' board was up there between the fire station and the post office. So so those are gone.
I think it was a combination of PHCA and fire departments. I know that Russell or Chris Far was very involved with it. But I guess my own personal feeling is that you know, it the only reason for it is historic. Those the the town of Pittkin back in the nineties had boardwalks. But that's not necessarily a reason to continue. And the the age of PHCA stands for historic.
Okay.
That's why I suggest referring to them and see if they're interested. And if not, make make mouth.
Hey, I would say in post haste, it's dangerous. I've seen a couple of boys riding bicycles on there too. So I don't know when the next meeting is.
Um, Jeri's correct in that uh I have looked at those boards and uh gone out there with the hammer a couple of times and driven nails that come right back out three days later. So I I understand. Uh, nails are bad news that stick up. Okay, we're gonna take some public comments.
Being being the president of PHDA, we have no desire to do that. I think it's a safety issue. It was a fundraiser probably forty, forty-five years ago. I mean, there's there's no sidewalk on the other side of the street all the way down Main Street. So why do we have to maintain to spend money doing that? So uh, I've kind of been in the board. I can thank you for the board. We just had meetings after, and I will bring it up next next board, which is uh meeting, which is Monday. But as as of right now, we have.
The next, excuse me, next meeting is when?
Monday.
This coming?
This coming Monday.
So we can probably wait that long.
So if you want to wait, that's fine. I'll take it through the board. My name's Gary Danhough, president of PHCA. Yeah. Thank you.
You know, I'm just scared that it's lucky that it was gonna help Gary Winjet between the post office and fire department. And he did have
Please sit your microphone up here, Ramon. Thanks.
Thank you, dear. Winjet nine is called the wing nut. Anyway, uh, he had some and we had a terrible time trying to get screws when they were screwed down. The dogs would twist off and then go get the board out. Nails would fall, the tops off and we had a terrible time. And we finally came up, went up a track of reports, and I believe they were eight-foot sections. And we tipped them up, put them on a trailer and loaded them up and went to the mining. And he had thirty dollars to talk the dump and went and they would accept that in a hundred and ten, they tried to charge for a hundred square miles, but no, they had a security rule. I'd say you've been enough.
Well.
Who are they?
Good morning. This is Marie Ross Miller. When I went to school here, there were sidewalks all the way down both sides of the street. Right next to the ditches. And I don't know when the ditches were built. But we used to cross the street and come to school on the sidewalk. We used to play um off scot. I understand the safety. I understand the rotting. I understand all that. But I would like to be able somehow to work it out that we still retain at least a little bit of history. Because there are pictures that we have of the sidewalk. I know it's an emotional thing for me. But um PHCA is is a historical part of this town. My DNA lives here. I've got family that's still around that probably would agree with me. Some of them are still older than me, and that's saying something. But um I understand where you're coming from. But I just wanted to be heard. Thank you.
Chad Varnell, I like history as well. Um, Tom, you said you're gonna install it, right?
Someone? If you will buy the lumber and the super deck seal, I will put those boards down.
So if the PHCA will have a private investment group, we will match the PHCA dollar for dollar as long as you install.
So is there any way I can tag you in on this?
Possibly, if you're nice.
I am nice. You know I'm nice. We'll think about it.
Like the idea of the PHCA, if they'll do like redo this again, where we can get the people that are volunteering, putting their names on it. We can actually put our names back on the board that you're going to do.
Well, somebody else is gonna have to write those names into those.
I think that we've got an awesome community, and I think that we can keep the history. We can rip it out and we can put new, or we can rip it out, we can put old, but I like the idea of redoing what happened four years ago.
Thank you.
I don't know. I think you kind of put the topper on that, didn't you? Any other public discussion? It looks like I'm hooked in here, doesn't it? Okay, now I just just so you guys know, uh, these boardwalks are sitting on timber that is larger than two by sixes. This is like four by sixes, and it's treated lumber. So this is not a cheap thing you're tying into your jet.
Someone might have got your latest property evaluation, but our houses are going for a lot of big bucks now.
Well, I ain't selling mine right away. Okay.
We'll step the boardwalks and houses soon.
Okay. All right.
So, Mr. Mayor of Panama?
Yes, ma'am.
I I think it's wonderful that that uh project can be, but I would like to allege in that the existing sidewalks from with the names where it starts just below.
The cafe, there's names in front of the cafe. There's names all the way up to the post office.
No, no, there are not.
Yes.
There are not names on, no, I just pumped it. In front of your
Okay, we won't fight about whether or not there's names here.
But okay, I I I'll be happy to be in charge of showing somebody where the demolition needs to occur. It is dangerous and I I would like to see it taken out, and then it'd be wonderful if PHCA and the community will replace that. But for now, the danger and the liability needs to be removed.
Okay, so you're saying get rid of it, and then whenever we get around to getting it back, get it back.
Yes, yes, yes. I think it'd be wonderful to get it back. So I would like to make a motion that we remove we remove the determined dangerous part of that wood walk, wooden walk.
Before I second that, I'd like to ask you to maybe define we and then we'll remove it.
I I'm hoping some will have some volunteers, but I might not want to go ahead. But uh, yeah, I would hope that there were volunteers, and I would volunteer to be in charge. The director, obviously, the director.
Okay, okay. We're gonna take a few more. We've got a a motion in a second. Does can we take public comments between those there? Okay, we will. We've got Mr. Adam standing up here.
Um, if we can have our names on the boards, Chad and I are in for the first twenty-five hundred dollars.
Oh, fantastic. How many boards do you want your name on?
This is Bob Taylor. Hello.
Hello, Bob.
I agree with Marie's statements, and I agree that redoing that boardwalk, you know, is not a bad idea. However, to my knowledge, and y'all can correct me, that is the only sidewalk in the whole town of Pittkin. And it lasted like a half a block or maybe a block.
Until we get done with it.
If we're gonna put a sidewalk there, I mean, what good who's gonna be walking down the street? And then they get past the post office, oh, a sidewalk. Then they take a ride, they walk the sidewalk, the sidewalk gives a Charlie's place, then they get back on the street. It just makes no sense to me personally. So do sidewalks, do sidewalks, but not just one block within the thousand fifty or a hundred blocks that we have. It just makes no sense to me. If it's a if it's an issue, and we want to bring it back for just the aesthetics, then I agree with that, but I'll tell you now, nobody's gonna be walking on that sidewalk. I would be first.
You will now.
Are there? Well, okay, then I'm wrong then. I never see anybody walking, and I'm just now hotel all the time. So maybe they don't walk it because there's nails in there. I don't know. Thank you.
All right, if there's no further discussion from our attendees this evening, we have a motion in a second to dismantle what is dangerous currently. Is that correct? Am I saying that correctly? And then uh proceed from there with the replacement of that section and perhaps a few other boards somewhere along the line. And.
Mister, that wasn't my motion. Your motion is simply to dismantle.
Motion is to dismantle. Okay.
That would be up to the community or the PHCA. But our responsibility would be to reduce the danger and the liability.
Okay, so a question for the clerk. Can we uh have a motion and a vote to remove a section, and then can we have a motion and a vote to give permission for private funding to replace the sidewalks?
I I would I would amend my motion or change it power.
Well, we can have two of them.
I think that Jeri should keep her motion as is. Um. We could just put this on next month's agenda after we have some confirmation from PHCA rather than a motion on a maybe. We can just wait till you're done. They're willing to be mobile projects before, but I do agree with Jeri. We have our auditor from our insurance company come over town.
Get rid of it. Okay. Okay, Jeri has made the motion to get rid of the problem. Ed wants to clarify. That the removal will be through the use of volunteers. Yeah, that would be me. That's my name. Okay, are we good with that?
Yes.
You want to second that? We have a motion in a second. All those on the board in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, discuss with possible action setting limits on discretionary spending for commissioners and clerks. We have a handout on that. Uh, a discretionary spending policy for the town of Pittkin. Sharon, you want to tell us anything about this or?
Uh, I just I just would like to make a request. I would request additional time for the board to review this prior to taking any vote. Um, it's a very preliminary draft on looking at the history of spending. Um, it was it was difficult to create this document without it being active to issues that the town has had in the past, and while those issues do need to be addressed, I think it would be better to just kind of focus based on problems, manage finances. Um, I I would request a work session to discuss it. I don't think we need to spend more than probably forty-five minutes or an hour talking about it. But my 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 preference on this primarily due to the fact that majority of individuals in town who have control of a budget are volunteers and are appointed by the board and not elected by the population. I think it's important that the discretionary or unplanned spending really has to a very minimum. And with that in mind, there really wasn't a lot of legal room for extra spending beyond what the board should have planned during budget season. So I I would just really, if if the board is is willing, I would like to have a a work session or have this added to a work session at some point in the next maybe two to three months.
Okay, what is the disposition of the board? Then we'll take a public comment.
I I would agree with Sarah on, I guess. I I'd I'd like to look at what's here compared to what the budgets were for the last couple of years and just and I I think what you did is took a percentage of the budgets to put in years that I don't know. That's why that's why.
No, it kind of varies based on the position. So for example, I can take streets. What I did was typically the the streets commissioner prior to setting the budget has an idea of the planned expenses and the planned projects. So that wouldn't really be considered discretionary spending if it's all planned. However, what I put in there was the cost of an additional load of gravel and plus a little bit of labor, which you don't really come up that, oh, we need seven loads of gravel and seven six, for example, does that need to come before the board? Probably not. But the majority of the projects that happen on streets should come before the fourth period budget season. So that was kind of what what guided that particular portion from the policy. Um, another section, the cemetery board, the cemetery board is historically completely independent, highly responsible. They never go over budget. They always know what they're going to do. And so within the policy, they they have quite a bit more leeway up to their budget amount because they have all their projects planned out. They're they're just kind of a self-contained unit, and they manage themselves very well. So that looks very different from from some of the other sections. Uh, with the clerk, for example, the the spending amounts add up to the amount of the clerk's budget or the portion of the budget that the clerk is generally in control of, which is spent on postage, paper, toner, you know, miscellaneous office supplies. So it's never anything major. Um, but there's a caveat in there. If there's an emergency, then a special meeting needs to be called, which is quite possible. So it 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 was really quite different depending on whose budget we were talking about.
And and I think that'd be great to have in a work session to have that explanation.
Yes, I and and for other reasons, this document we did get played.
Yes, that was very important.
That's all right. But yeah, I would like to table this where there's any controversy so that we can talk about it at the book session and not take it up.
Okay, looks like we have a consensus from the board. We do have a comment. Jesse, please, please go ahead.
Uh, I would like to at least consider one draft, a percent of the budget of the particular departments. Uh, it looks kind of funny to me to have a five hundred dollar discretionary spending on a twenty, thirty thousand dollar budget and have a five hundred dollar discretionary spending on a five hundred or a thousand dollar budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Thank you, Jesse. Okay, uh, do we need a vote on this, Sarah? Okay, we need a vote to table this.
Table this agenda item until after we can have a work session on this item.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Uh, discuss with possible action responding to zoning board recommendation on a fence permit appeal for four twenty-eight State Street. So I'll just pretty much lay this out as I see it and, um, a piece of property was purchased that had a road on it. Been there a long time. Colorado Title forty-three dash two dash two oh one. Uh, the following are declared to be public highways. And, uh, you can read down through several categories under that statutory heading. Number C is all roads over private lands that have been used adversely without interruption or objection on the part of the owners of the lands for twenty years or more. Our attorney, and this has come up before, so I was kind of surprised to see this again. Our attorney at the last, uh, wow, which one was this? Let me get the date. I think it was the last one. Yeah, this was a May twenty meeting. He stated that, uh, this easement of town right of way by Colorado statute and, uh, he would never suggest the town to give up any property or, or changes to easements, roads, or establish thoroughfares through the town. So, uh, with that, his recommendation on not giving up property that has been established by state statute for the duration of multiple years. My personal take on this is if you need a fence, just apply for a fence permit that is five foot back from the driving surface there onto the grass. I don't, I don't know what else to say. If you want a public comment, please go ahead.
Chad Varnell here. So, uh, over the past twenty years, have you surveyed this property and surveyed the road to this property?
It's a public comment. These are rhetorical questions, Chad.
Okay, well, historical, whatever that word is, that's fine with me, but if, uh, if you want to take away part of my property, uh, it's my belief drain field is in that section. Uh, if you would like to take away my property, I would not have three lots to build on at that point, so being conforming structure. And I think that in that stack of papers that you probably go through quite often says that you can't make a conforming property and unconforming property. So that's my public comment. Number, um, fourteen on that, whatever word you used is I, I, I'm not giving up my property. If you wanted to tie my fence property, go ahead and deny it. I applied for a fence property, fence permit, five foot, my property, and just like everywhere else in town. If you don't want to, if you don't want to do it, break it in the can, just deny it. I'll hand it to the attorney and they can have fun.
It, it was denied.
Okay.
Jesse, again, we've been dealing with this at the zoning board adjustments. And we have a history article documentation of streets that have been modified to meet our topography. In this town we laid out, there was no discussion about a creek, a mountain, trees, or huge rocks. So the path of least resistance is where the streets mound up. If you look on State Street, the whole traffic pattern's on the creek half of the road. Time and time again, going out of town on State Street, we had a squatted property. And if you remember, the plaintiff's first request was to trade three hundred and some square feet, a triangle, black paint property living in ten at towards lane and Fifth Street, ten feet towards State Street. And swap that for, I think it was under three feet of a hundred and fifteen foot length of Fifth Street. It's already used by him and zero traffic. It was a win-win deal. I don't think we budget enough money for attorneys to fight, fight, fight and go to court, court, court and cause disruption in this peaceful town. Reconsider, please, and bring our attorney in and talk about this and see if we can find a mid-round so it is a win-win deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Mr. Varnell.
Chad Varnell again. Uh, personally, I think you have a personal vendetta against me. When I turned in the fence permit, you personally denied that.
I did.
You commented on it.
I'm sorry, I should not have responded. Please strike that.
Yeah, I, I think, like I said, I think you have a personal vendetta. You have a family member that was right across the street from this. I just so happened to have on camera parking in the town alleyway. Since I've had my equipment parked there, no access problems because they don't park in the town alleyway anymore. And if you want to go up there with me, I'll be more than happy to park fifteen feet from my property pin and show you where the alley is. That's my option for you.
Thank you. Okay.
Any comments back up here?
Uh, we can take comments back up here, yes.
And I believe with the simplicity of Pittkin that there's an easy solution to this. And that solution is there's room on Fifth Street that the town will never use. It would be right next to Mr. Varnell's property. We swap part of that property for the property on the alley. And even swap, he can move his pin back towards State Street, he can move his pin out towards Fifth Street. We're not giving up anything and this whole problem can go away.
Amen.
So, just to clarify, you're suggesting square footage for square footage?
Square footage for square footage.
Thank you. Yes, please.
To my knowledge, and I could be wrong about this, I pay property taxes on however much that is according to the deed. It's just a comment. I don't know. So it is true. I don't understand how I can be paying property taxes on something I don't own if I don't own it. I don't get it.
Hi, Adams, I want to clarify. Further upon, you said the attorney mentioned the twenty-year statute that somebody's, I got this wrong. Somebody's been using a piece of property that belonged to a town for twenty years or you're entitled to. I'm sure I got that right.
I can't.
I can, I can.
Okay, thank you, sir. Because that would be me to pay the bad taxes on. Big money for bones.
Let me find my agenda again, guys. Where are we? Oh, here it is. I got it. Uh, disbursements.
Is the town making an official response on the question of the fence permit? I don't have an official response.
An official response? Okay.
Could we hear that recommendation again, please? From the zoning board?
I can't read it.
Is that okay? Is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
I would suppose the zoning board recommendation, uh, on a fence permit is appropriate. What was the recommendation? Do we have that? I did not bring that one with me.
Um, the motion from the zoning board, oh wait, that one died. Hold on. It says, motion to recommend to the Board of Trustees to approve the fence permit in regard to the five-foot setback from the pins or approve the previous request, previously requested land swap. So if the board wants to reopen the question of land swap, that would have to go on a different agenda because this was in regard to the fence permit appeal, not land swap.
I see.
So, that's, that's the recommendation.
So that's the zoning board recommendation? Okay, and, um, I would point out again, we positioned that our attorney suggested, which is neither one of those. So, where does that put us? Where does that put me? Um, we have what the attorney has recommended and we have what the zoning board has recommended. So, do we need to hear this one more time from our attorney?
But I don't see on the executive sessions you were provided tonight. I don't see where it says anything about the lands.
He's online.
Okay, Clay, give us your input. I'm sorry, what? Mr. Bookner?
Yes, sir, I'm here. I mean, I don't know how else I can clarify this. I think there's many different ways to deal with this. The the overarching, overarching issue is your plats, your platted streets and the way your streets actually are laid are never gonna match up with, you know, they're, they're not gonna match up with reality. And there are, there have been and always will be and are laws in place that protects the town, town's right-of-ways and public thoroughfares. It's a dangerous precedent to set to start trading people who are coming along after roads have been in place for seventy-five plus years, fifty years at least, to start trading land because, you know, there's gonna be new owners, there's gonna be constant transfers and somebody's gonna look at an old survey from an old plat, put some pins down and say you owe them however many hundreds of square feet. Before you know it, your entire town is gonna be, you know, some sort of squiggly roads with, you know, transfers that just don't make sense and, and you're, and you're, and you're gonna lose the current position of your town, which is fairly organized, squared lots, roads are in place, everybody more or less knows where their property lines are, the roads are, plus the easements. And as Pittkin grows and progresses, you know, there's gonna be more utilities and, and more building and more uh, infrastructure and you, you just don't want to start, in my opinion, giving away property for no reason. If there was some sort of scenario where the lots, lot lines have been misdrawn or somebody's property had been taken, that's something completely different. But what we're talking about is well-established roads, five, six decades established roads. And there's no reason legally to give up property that has been maintained and dedicated as right-of-way for that long. It's just the law doesn't support it. And, and like I said, it's a dangerous precedent because you're gonna, you know, eventually somebody's gonna challenge the town to say, my plat, the road doesn't coincide with my, you know, whatever the plat is, but you're not gonna have property to give away. And then what are you gonna do? My suggestion is that anybody who wants to build or put any permanent infrastructure without a waiver, that they'll move it at a future time, especially when it comes to fencing and boundary line issues is to, you know, deny those requests in favor of the greater community's interest and the established rights of way that, you know, serve, um, public interest. So, you know, I don't have any, I don't really have anything else to add to that. I tried to make it very clear, you know, my legal opinion. I don't believe litigation is necessary. If someone wants to litigate it, I believe the town is in the much stronger legal position and, and the losing party would be, you know, subject to paying the other one's attorney's fees and I'm I'm confident that, you know, the town is in the right here. I wouldn't be suggesting that the town expose themselves to fiduciary or other liability, um, regarding this issue.
I have a comment for you, Mr. Andy. Uh, it's not my job to educate you, but you know that in the town, past history, they've done this multiple times in the past.
You're just public comment.
Okay, well, I'm informing you that this has happened multiple times in the past. Uh, have you seen the discrepancy of these pins? Uh, where they vote the road is, where, uh, my property is. Have you seen that? Have you seen pictures of it? Probably not.
No.
Just a comment.
Just a comment.
Public comment.
Okay, well, here, here's my public comment about the issue. He misled town officials into believing that I was engaging in some kind of lawsuit against the town. That I had higher legal representation to help me against the town. I had told him three times, that's not the case. He's not, he also instructed members of the council not to speak with me. Sarah did too, but she's the conduit for what he said. So when I filed a court request, I'll write open records request. He didn't respond.
Uh, you're off topic here with this.
I don't think so. Sixteen minutes, yeah. He didn't respond. And when I told him he didn't respond at the time, I said I followed up on person. However, he had backed me into speaking only to him because I was not to speak to Sarah or any town council. He also just made a little song right against the chat. Didn't sing to me. When I asked for him to let the folks know that I don't have an attorney and I'm not engaging in illegal action, he said, quote, "The idea that threaten illegal actions is levers in negotiations with the town staff will not be effective." I've never done such. I've no intention of doing such. There's an old saying, that a bad attorney has a shot at winning a really good case. But a great attorney has the plus of winning a bad case. I don't want a bad attorney to draw the I don't want a bad attorney to draw the town into legal action. It doesn't and I'm not taking, for the record, I am not taking any legal action.
Hi, Chad Hornell again. I don't know if the attorney's aware, or if you guys have made the attorney aware, that our survey is more than seven foot off for the entire city of Pickin. Okay, so if you're gonna start disputing property pins over a stupid fence, then, you know, maybe we oughta have the town spend the town money to replat the entire town. Okay, so, you know, I'm asking for a fence. In my fence, if y'all haven't looked at it or not, I have a folder and some objects placed five feet off of my property pin, which is where my fence would go. It's been like that for roughly a month. There's been no traffic issues, because people that live across the street are parking their own private property at this point. They still occasionally park in the alleyway, which I have a problem with. They've been very cordial. They've been very nice to one another. It's the way that neighbors do things. However, they think that they own the alleyway, and that's not the case. The whole town has streets. They're gravel. If you have four people drive two foot over into your grass, and then when our people that go through and volunteer in our town to put our street gravel out, if they spill a little gravel on your property, they're gonna shovel all this stuff up, because town's gonna come and get you. Take your property from me. That's what you wanna do? That's what it seems like you wanna do. I came to this in the very beginning with a simple request. Trade me property so we can rectify the situation. It would not affect anybody negatively, period. I was denied that. I asked for a trade property for a square footage. I've been denied that. You personally went after me for not giving me a fence permit. You guys are digging yourself. What are you gonna do? You know, what do I, what options do I have? I bought property. I don't know what three lots is, so much square foot. If I have the square footage, I can get a permit. I can build a new house. If I don't have that square footage, I'm definitely not gonna get a permit for a new house. Where do I go? What do I do? You guys, as the town, have done this in the past. A land swap keeps everybody happy. No attorneys, no nothing, but you don't wanna do it, because it's a personal vendetta. Why don't you do like a little questionnaire against who wants to do what? If you wanna do that, do a special session. You've already done those before, and you still don't help with the solution. You just say, "No. I'm not gonna be okay with no. I'm not gonna lay down. I'm gonna fight." I bought property. I had it surveyed. I know where my property pins are. It's not my fault that somebody put gravel on my property. You can go up and down Court's Lane, it's perfectly on the pins, the entire way until you get to the last little corner, and I'm standing up for my last little corner. Thank you.
All right, okay, Ramiza.
Sorry.
After her. We're gonna, we're gonna close this out here pretty quick.
Can I go ahead?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Historian again. There are fences in this town already, providing people's properties. There's some right here. They go all the way down for a while. And there used to be fences on the other side. I helped my dad with them. He used to dig those post holes in there. I don't know that we needed special protection or anything, but we used to, we did keep out the cows and horses from coming into the yard, because they were all over. So, the fence is in a way to keep somebody out or somebody in? I'm not really sure of which way. All I know is that we do have fences, yes. And it looks like, but it's been proposed here, everything has been checked out. Everything is in order. And in my opinion, I don't see why we still can't have a fence if it's not gonna hurt anybody.
Okay, we're gonna close it out from the public. Comments from the board?
Yeah, I love to. Haven't heard anything here. Land swaps, those are what they're talking about. So let me give you a little background. Yes, there has several land swaps in Pickin. At least for you, we're done while I was mayor in the nineteen eighties. But I can tell you that each one of those started with a proposal with information. At the last meeting, I asked, I just wanted to discuss this further, because I hadn't seen any of the information that both the zoning board and the prior board before April discussed. So I got some information, which consists of the building permit request and the letter from the property owner, and a hand drawing, I guess, of a fence. Little hard to tell. Personally, as one board member out of five, I wouldn't consider a land swap without seeing the exact swap. That means that the property owner, Mr. Hornell.
Hornell, with a V.
That's what I said.
No, you stubble.
If he wants a land swap, I would expect to see a valid survey showing exactly what is to be swapped. And I haven't seen that. And, you know, if he wants the board to do that, I haven't seen a reason why the board should. So, that's where I'm at, is, you know, I'm hearing a lot of this and that that really has no meaning. Because it's, you know, I've seen the pin in the ground, but I don't know how much land there is that's being used as a public right-of-way. And until I see some of that, till the board sees some of that, why shouldn't this board consider a swap?
I have a comment for you.
Whoa, 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 whoa. We'll get to you in a minute. Order of events.
So I do have an opinion on the land swap. The town is the one that said that it's a town right-of-way. So in my opinion, it would be the town's responsibility to do a survey of the town right-of-way, of how many square feet that is, and then square footage would be, say, taken off of Fifth Street, that would be done part of the land swap. That's not the property of, it's the town that is saying it's a town right-of-way. That we're taking that land, basically, is what we're saying, in a right-of-way. So it'd be up to the town to procure that survey, see how many feet it is, and determine that off of the fifth street.
Jerry, you have any thoughts?
We're a statutory town, and I know that our attorney has advised us of what the law is. But you know, we are also Pickin.
Amen.
And when we can find, and I'm not talking about the details of this particular thing, because I, we do, I think we do need to see more information, like this square footage. We're not giving away land, and we were told in by previous situation that we can't sell land. We're not doing that here either. We're not losing land. We're swapping. If there can be an amenable situation that can be taken care of very easily, I see it as a win-win for the town and the applicant. So, and we do, we have precedents, a lot of precedents, even recently, just a few years ago. So I have a problem with this being so contentious and unworkable. I feel like we need to consider this. I was not at, I think I was in Rochester, the month that you dealt with this thing before. And, and I wasn't in the executive session, and when I tried to listen to the recording, it was garbled, and so I am not aware of that. I mean, I did not hear what went on in that. So I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage, but I just, in Pickin, we can make this a win-win situation. That's my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna, let me say one thing if I can. I'm all for an amenable solution. My point is based on objective data that's been given to me by town staff and trustees and executive sessions. I'm not suggesting that this be some sort of, you know, legal battle. My only point is that there are very well-established laws regarding right-of-way and public thoroughfare, and in this case, what would be a prescriptive easement that is offset by an incongruent plat, which is incredibly common. I mean, this is something that happens all the time. This is not a Pickin-specific issue. Insofar that Pickin is willing to do some sort of variance and/or do some sort of land swap that doesn't otherwise set a bad precedent, I'm not suggesting against it. My advice is wholly objective, you know, based on the idea that somebody cannot just buy a piece of property and then have it surveyed and suggest to the town that, while somebody else owned it and they were fine with the way everything was, but now I own it and I want to extend my property into what's existing thoroughfare in exchange for something else. You know, that has second- and third-order effects that seriously consider. That said, if there's some sort of variance, or there's some sort of, there's some sort of negotiation that the board wants to do, I'm all for it. I will find a way to yes for the Board of Trustees. But as far as this black and white goes, you know, the right-of-way pushed right and authority of the town, and I don't know if there's a small town in the interior western slope or southwest Colorado that exact the existing plat, and so, you know, I just wanna be clear, this is, this isn't like, you know, a gray area of law, but I truly appreciate small Colorado rural towns, and that's all who I will represent. And I appreciate being creative and getting to a solution that benefits everyone, but I don't believe necessarily that solution comes from, you know, a private property owner's assertion regarding, you know, what they believe their rights to be, you know, laterally. So, I guess I just wanted to say that, you know, this is not, it's not personal for me. It's just, it's just a response to the information that I have and the knowledge of, you know, historical and existing statutory and case law that I believe exists to support the town's position that you're in control of, you know, the property and the current right-of-way. But I do believe there's other solutions. So I just don't want you to, I just don't want the board to think that this is some sort of, you know, binary solution that, you know, you can only go one way or the other. There's still multiple options here. And I, of course, always advise and encourage the town to work with their citizens to come up with creative solutions.
Thank you, Mr. Bookner. I've not met you in person yet, but I look forward to that, and I would love for you to look at this property and see that there is certainly looks like perhaps there's a solution to this instead of contention, etc. So thank you very much, and I'm all for common sense, and I appreciate you clarifying that for me, especially since I was not present at that meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Chad, you have a comment?
Chad Hornell, so, legal battles cost the town money. Legal battles cost me money. Whether whoever wins, it's really the lawyers that win. There's gonna have to come up with a solution, long-term, because we're just fighting over this over and over and over. I think that personally, me placing my obstacles on my property and not one person has been stuck in that alleyway, and there's people that travel through that every day. I mean, personally, I've gone out of my way to travel the alleyway more and more over the last month, just to prove that there is no problem traveling that alleyway. I'm perfectly open to a land swap. I'm really open to leaving the property pins the way they've been for God knows how long. But to answer your question against, you know, a proposed, I'm not gonna spend another twenty-five-hundred dollars on a survey until I came to the town and said, "Hey, will y'all do a land swap?" If you will do a land swap, you'll consider a land swap. I don't know if it's my responsibility or town responsibility, because I'm just dumb. I just know that I bought a piece of property without a survey. I paid for a survey, and I knew that my property pin was out there. I just didn't know exactly where. It had been moved. I don't know who moved it, why it was moved, but the survey that I have, the legal binding survey, he told me that is my property pin. If you go fifteen feet across from that property pin, there's a tree there. Another pin that's growing into that tree. You can get it with a metal detector. You can't physically see it. I wasn't about to go and start chopping down a stupid tree so you didn't get to a property pin. But I met the surveyor there, told him exactly what my thoughts were. He assured me that you were gonna get it exactly where it was, the property pin, then ripped out by a snowplow or something along the lines. He put a new property down there. I took many pictures of it. I've measured from the tree five different ways, so that we can know exactly where that pin is. It pulled up again. So again, my solution, pretty simple. You guys, every one of you guys drove down Court's Lane, there's no obstruction. I can't build a fence all the way to my property, just within five foot. I know what the rule is. That's where this property pin is. That's where this structures are. I have established my property line where my fence would be, so that everybody can see that there is no problem. There's no ease, there's no problem getting through this area. It affects like three people, but you have a vendetta against me, so there's that, okay? Ask anybody in here, do we have a problem getting to Court's Lane? Anybody? No. Let's build a stupid fence. But what's the problem with building a fence if nobody's had a problem for the last six, last month getting through there?
Some of us live here in the weather. Think about it, Chad.
Yes, sir, and the people that live here in the winter, my neighbors.
This was his public comment last night.
My neighbor who crossed the street from me parked the My neighbor who crossed the street from me parked their cars in the alleyway all winter long. I have video of it. It's not okay for them to break the rules, but it's not okay for me to claim my property where my property is. Somebody else is in the wrong. It's not me. I have a vendetta against you two.
That's what I figured.
Go ahead, Jake. We're gonna wrap this up pretty quick.
There you go. But, uh, I, I don't think there's really an issue here, just from listening. So hear me out. If the, the town alleyways are platted at fifteen feet wide, is that correct?
Yes.
Street commissioner? And if you measure from that pin to the pin, I guess that's in a tree, that's fifteen feet. So what I hear the town proposing is they're gonna ignore the plat, which flats every alleyway at fifteen feet wide. And right there, the town is deciding they want to take control and make that part of the alleyway wider by an additional ten feet or whatever it is. So it, the inconvenience is that, uh, keeps Sarah and Josiah from parking in the alleyway, which technically should never have been happening. So the law should be that the alleyway remain where it has always been. And the encroachment on the private property should be done away with by the town. And it's gonna force property owners to use their property for parking. And that's, I think that's just how a proper town would function.
Thank you, Jake.
Okay. I will throw this out. Several things that our attorney said. And while it has been pointed out that there have been land swaps, his point that we're swapping land is a dangerous issue. His other point was that for uh, traffic right-of-way.
Jesse, sit down so I can hear. Please. Please, he's on the zoning board. He can speak. I can't.
I'm sorry. That was probably very inappropriate.
Oh, it was. Forgive me.
Okay, um, that there is no, uh, with the amount of time that this roadway has been in place, which has been through multiple owners before Mr. Vornell bought it, that, uh, this becomes a public right-of-way. So you bought land with a public right-of-way on it. Basically, I heard him say you should deny the quest and deny the request and stay with the established right-of-way. Heard him talk about state statutes and then I heard him talk about, well, negotiation is not out of the question. Work with citizens to come up with creative solutions. And, um, I'm going to break precedence here just a little bit. I want a yes or no answer from Mr. Vornell back there because I want to be clear on this. You said you would be amenable to a square-foot swap of land. Thank you. Okay, so with that in mind, I'm going to suggest because I've not been privy to, uh, attorney privilege at all either, and I may not be, although at this point, after setting through all of this, I, I have a notion maybe that, uh, at such time as it falls into place that um, he replace our missing trustee, I would like to throw my name in for mayor. But that's just aside. I would like to, um, I would like to get a written recommendation from our attorney regarding this concept of a square-footage land swap. Because that's just a little bit of corner down there. So with that, I'm gonna throw us back up here one more time and then we're gonna jump on to, uh, dispersments and then we're gonna get done.
Looking back on zoning board meeting, I think we were talking somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred and seventy-five square feet. I believe is what we were looking at. So I would be.
Could you speak up?
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
So we're, we're looking in the neighborhood of three hundred and seventy-five feet.
What were you looking at?
The triangle that was on the town property. And I believe some of that came from measurements that give had given us. So what I, but, and that was rough. I mean, it was rough measures. It's not exact. So I would be of the opinion that we hear from the attorney on the land swap specifically, with that in mind, that it's not a lot of square footage. But I'd also like to hear the other suggestions that he had. Cause he made comments a little bit ago that there may be some other solutions, creative solutions that we could come up with. And we're gonna need his assistance in coming up with those solutions.
I don't disagree with that at all. I, I wonder if it would be appropriate or if I understand that Mr. Bookner is, is the legal advisor, but I wonder if it would be helpful for him to lay eyes on what a small piece of property for land swap this is. That would be my question. And, and I don't agree, I don't disagree with Mr. Pianotto's suggestion.
That the, uh, aerials or Google Earth or whatever you wanna call it reasonably, uh,
Yes, but I, I would be very interested. I, I would really like him to lay eyes on it. I mean, those aerials are not always at least the camera.
Well, I'm going to, uh, I'm sorry. Did you have something you wanna say, Ramon?
I haven't seen any aerials. I haven't seen anything that indicates three hundred and seventy-five square feet. All I want is accurate information.
Right.
And that comes down to a survey, not a worth of four rivers, but worth of units. I mean, there was a proposal that was per count by this board for a swap. The only thing I saw in that would have been giving somewhere around in the neighborhood of five hundred square feet to the property owner out of Fifth Street. And I don't know how much that corner is. All I know is fifty square feet. Maybe more, maybe less. I, I personally will consider a swap without the information.
Then, then I'd suggest that the town do a survey.
We should the town do it.
Because it's the town that's claiming the prescribed right of.
Yeah, it's ours. We don't have to claim it. It's ours.
And then we should be responsible for this.
It's the property owner that wants a change.
No, I mean, actually he doesn't wanna change. He wants to leave the pin the way it is on the purple fence.
No, he wants a change.
Okay, okay, guys. Let's, um, let's send this one more time to our attorney. And see if, uh, with, in conjunction with that and with our next meeting, perhaps, have a short discussion on this. Ed brought up this three hundred and seventy-five square feet and I don't remember, I don't remember. That doesn't mean I didn't do it. It just means I don't remember. And, uh, the advantages to that, I don't know what those are. So, I think let's hear from our attorney one more time. If the board would be amenable, with a pin in place down there, it would be not too difficult for somebody with a little measuring skill to come up with a square footage, rough square footage, prior to seeing if that would be an amenable situation. And then we could move forward survey-wise from there if we decided to.
I would be more than happy to join you so you and I could measure with Mr. Vornell's if you're in agreement.
And in conjunction with that, you know, um, I will say that while that corner has been cut hard for multiple years through multiple landowners, it is well gravelled and fairly solid. Um, it may be that all of that corner is not needed for that turn to be fluid for big rigs and garbage trucks and so forth. So uh, that would be my proposal.
The attorney, what?
Okay. If you have a comment for us now, Mr. Bookner, please.
Um, I just, I think you guys have kind of teased out all the issues with, with this. You know, what you have is town's interest in the property versus, you know, a private property owner. You have a, a specialized, you know, um, interest in, in your community and, and the local government being, you know, what it is and, and pickin' being as intimate and, uh, you know, neighborly as it is, you know, the fact that you're considering this, I think is, is admirable. You know, I reiterate my points that you don't wanna get in the business of just trading out town rights of way because someone has gone back and done a survey based on an old plat because that creates a dangerous precedent. And, you know, you could end up trading just a few hundred square feet with every person in the town, which could end up being a lot and requiring the moving of roads, et cetera. So I'm not saying that's what this is, but I'm just saying that, you know, we need to be careful um, before we do that. That said, I do believe there are, you know, various other options, including, um, variances, easements, et cetera, that can be, that can possibly be discussed. But I, I am, I would say I'm wholly against the town spending money on this. The town wouldn't even be considering this issue if the property owner hadn't come forward with the suggestion that um, there'd be some sort of land swap and or, um, you know, survey done. It's, it is a applicant's responsibility to come up with a objective and, um, measurable and certifiable application slash survey for the town to consider. It's not the town's job to defend existing right-of-way um, based on an applicant's assertion that their, the right-of-way is in their property. So that would be a very, very dangerous precedent to set again because you'd have possibly, you know, multiple owners asserting their rights to, um, town right-of-way property that, that they believe is theirs via survey and then having the town prove against them that it's not would, you know, be, become untenable fiduciary burden on the town for no reason, whi- which you certainly don't have the responsibility um, to do. So again, I think there could be a, a perfectly negotiable and, um, sort of, uh, double-edged, win-win sort of situation here, but I do not suggest that we just start paying for surveys to prove property that we, we already know that are, you know, are the towns via statute and, you know, established law. So again, I, it's not personal. Um, for me, I don't understand, I, there's been some accusations and assertions that we need to believe there's some personal or at least interpersonal issues that are involved and not, of course, is, um, common and that's part of politics. But my job and my objective is to give you the best objective legal advice I can. And as the Board of Trustees, your responsibility is to the town as a whole and to safeguard and make decisions that, um, that consider the entire town and not just individual property owners. And in this case, I think, you know, there, there's no reason to pay town money to prove something that we already know. And so while, while I believe that there could be, you know, a, a a good outcome to this, absent litigation and, you know, more contention, um, you know, I don't suggest the town just make those decisions and, and that vacuum to try to steer clear of that. I, I believe the town is in the right. Um, I believe that if, if, if a town, a private property owner wants to contest the town right-of-way, they have the, um, burden of proof to do so.
So, Mr. Bookner, I'd like to ask a question. Your opinion? So that we could see roughly the square footage that we're talking about, would you see be, would you be opposed to the mayor pro tems himself meeting with Mr. Vornell and actually measuring this off to see what square footage we're leaving, looking at?
I, I'm not opposed to anything the Board of Trustees decides to do. You're the ultimate decision maker. Um, I would, I will say that I believe that even whether it's four hundred, five hundred square feet or a hundred square feet, that the principle stands. It's not a matter of, well, if it's just a little bit, then we should, you know, bend our will. I, I, I believe that any amount of town property i- is, is worth saving, especially for the greater good of the community. And I, I get the argument that, you know, maybe we don't need all of it. And that's something that obviously the town can consider. That's, you could grant an easement, you could grant a variance, you could replat the road. I mean, there's all sorts of different options. My point is it's not the town's responsibility to pay for and or fix this for a single property owner. Especially when the right-of-way has been established for, you know, arguably fifty to seventy-five years. There is no court in the world that's gonna decide that the town would owe that back to owe that back to a, you know, a single private property owner absent other facts that I, that I'm not aware of.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bookner. Well, with that, it seemed fairly definitive that our counselor has established this, this legitimately town property by virtue of the length of time it's been there. And, uh, that it is not our job to establish in any way survey or otherwise that it is town right-of-way. So I guess I'm I'm going to entertain a motion that we have our attorney come up with any other possible solutions besides the ones that he has put the nicks on. Which is you don't swap land just indiscriminately. You don't survey land that's already yours. There are precedents that you're treading pretty hard on here. So I think I would entertain a motion to I think I would entertain a motion to ask Mr. Bookner for any other helpful solution to this situation. And if that does not. Resolve, then. When this comes up again, um. It'll come up as. Town property and that's just the way it is. Jared.
I I'm not interested in a motion that would deny land swap because. Uh, the attorney tonight said that would be a viable solution.
That's what I was saying. There's several things.
Several things, and I'm not saying that's the only thing we're looking at, but I certainly don't want him to. At our direction, not look at a land swap because what I have, what limited information I have seen. That looks like it could be a win-win situation. And I'm not opposed to looking at others. But I certainly don't want to, um. Help the to instruct the attorney to. Forego land swap.
Well, I. If he is of the opinion. That that is one of the viable options that we have, but I want to know what they are. If he says there's two, you might do this, or you might do this, you might do that. I want to know exactly what those are, what those look like. We'll review them and. There wouldn't be a final conclusion.
Yes, yes, and and hopefully people, it could be. A win-win, whatever this, whatever avenue we look at. Hopefully, I mean, it has to be good for, I mean, it has to be okay and good for the town, but it could also be good possibly for the.
So am I going to table this one more time?
That we look at each one individually. This is not like setting a. Widespread precedence for anything. We look at each. Occurrence individually, which I think is what they've done in the past, or the ones that I know of. Were each one individually.
I don't know if we need a motion or. Where I'm at on it is I want to hear. All the different. Options that the attorney might have, including land swap or whatever.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to able this, table this one more time. For one last go. Of what our options are. And. Uh, then we're gonna have to give it up one way or the other. So anybody got a motion to that effect?
This is Jared. Can I make the statement that we table? Item. Five nine. With the caveat that we instruct the. The town attorney. To. Inform us. Of. All the options that he sees possible, including land swap. And and there are probably many others. That's that's up to him. But. Table it with the caveat that the town attorney will. Bring back to this board. The options that he deems. Advisable for the direction of this town.
We have a motion.
Second that, this is it.
Ed agrees. Ed seconded. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And I'm going to abstain on this. Because I just flat don't know. Okay.
Um, I'd like to say one last thing on this issue. And that's to make it clear that you now have. The duties and responsibilities of the mayor. And that includes. Whatever you feel is appropriate in discussion with the attorney.
Okay, so that brings me to a question. Because I don't know what happens when a mayor resigns. Does Mayor Pro Tem then just automatically move up or is that position open or?
So the board has a couple of options. Um, Tony Bookner, would you mind just maybe shoot this for me?
Sure, say that again. Do you, did you want me to talk through it or did you want to talk through it?
Um, you can go ahead. I think they probably were here directly from you. Thank you.
Sure, so, um. The mayor in a weak mayor form of government is just another voting member of the Board of Trustees. They act as the chairperson. They have a couple official. Um, extra duties, including, you know, help setting the agenda and being the main liaison to. Town staff between the Board of Trustees. Um, but when they resign effectively, it's um, very similar to when a trustee resigns. So what? The default. Procedure is, um, the mayor pro tem would now become the acting mayor. And of course, the board itself. Uh, could decide to replace the mayor through appointment. In which case, um. The mayor pro tem as a, you know, just a a a member of of the trustees, there would be an empty trustee position, then that you can again. Go through the process of appointment. And or, um, you know, waiting and doing an election, of course. The. Administratively, the easiest and less expensive. Way to go versus putting out for a vote is to fill vacancies via appointment and then wait for. Um, that particular tenure to run. Uh, until you have to run for election again. So in this case, I'm not en- entirely, I know this is something that Sarah might know better. Um, but you, the acting mayor. Uh, and other trustees could appoint. The sitting mayor who would then get to be in that position until. Um, mayor box, uh. Tenure runs and then that would go up for vote regardless of. Um, how how long that person sits in that position. And then likewise, anybody backfilling a trustee position that fills the role of mayor. Um, you know, you would have to appoint to that position. And that position would then. Terminate. At that, um, original. Whoever was holding that original positions, um, timeline. So, all that to say. Uh, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, you are now currently the acting mayor. Until and in such time. That a new mayor is elected and or appointed by the board. And in such case that you're appointed as the new mayor. Which is not to be, you know, presumed, of course. Um, then your position as trustee could then become subject to an appointment. And or vote the same way as the mayor's position would be.
Sounds like we have a space to fill at least. Well, we have, we have a space to fill. I suppose that will be posted. A trustee, we need another trustee. And then however else the rest of it works. We have one last item on our agenda and I would like to get through it. And this is reviewed.
This. Last item?
We. We did vote on it. On the fence permit. Fence permit. We voted on it three, four, and then.
Good. I'm sleepy.
Cause I just don't know. The View Treasurers report discussing vote on the twenty twenty-four dispersments. That wasn't real tough. I took a look through them. Anybody else have anything they want to add to those or say about them?
I just wanted to make two, one quick comment.
Yes.
I'm sorry, no, let's report, so I want to make a quick comment. Um, dispersments, no, I'm good. Dispersments, I'm good, sorry.
Well, go ahead. No? Okay.
Any comments on this?
No, I was waiting to hear what you.
No, I, no, I said, I'm good.
Okay, well, like I said, it was fairly straightforward. There's one, two, three, four, five, six. Seven dispersments made this year. I mean, made this. And one of them was our. Yearly contribution to the fire department. I'm glad to see that. Um, the. Yeah, so if there's no, um. Discussion on this, is any discussion on these dispersments?
Does that have a second?
Okay. We have a motion to accept the dispersments. And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And I? Have I missed anything on the agenda? Did I jump right past anything?
You skipped the updates planning discussion, which is.
Oh, yeah, well.
Fine.
We, we are going to do that, I think.
Fine. I do want to make a couple.
Okay, go ahead.
On reports, uh, since we don't have a ditch commissioner, I would like to at least recognize. The individuals that helped open the ditches.
That's right.
Yes, an excavation had completed. The excavation of the ditches. I didn't write down the dates. The first part of the ditches were opened, which was State Street, just just to give people an idea. Amount of time that it takes to open up the ditches.
And this is what, four guys?
This was Jesse James, Ricky Miller, Todd Adams, and myself.
Yeah, I thought that was.
This afternoon till seven P M. Six hours, that's twenty-four man-hours. On just State Street. On Main Street, on the Creekside. We opened up, it was Jesse James, Henry Kehonik, Fred Archuleta, and myself. Three hours, so that's twelve man-hours. And then on June thirteenth, we opened up the mountainside of Main Street. Those involved, Ed Herman, Fred Archuleta, Brad Bous, Chris National, myself. Ricky Miller showed up at the fourth quarter of the last ten minutes. Uh, roughly one and a half hours, eight man-hours, so a total of forty-four man-hours. Volunteer work spent to put those ditches. Fire. Ditches and irrigation as well.
I want to. I saw you just working.
I still did.
I need a copy of that.
Of who?
I can take a picture of it. You can take it.
Okay.
All right.
The other, the other question I have on the reports. Is on the mayor report, we obviously don't have a mayor. So I guess I'm gonna ask the question, what are we gonna do? Over the last several weeks, we received, Board of Trustees have received a number of complaints. If I read the complaint procedure. Complaints were supposed to be investigated and then the preliminary report. Uh, put in the mayor's report for those. Complaints. I also understand the environmental health. A letter that was sent based off of a complaint and that is supposed to be. Put in the mayor's report as well after the environmental health agent does the investigation. Um, I guess I've got to ask, what are we gonna do with these complaints in a timely fashion? The people that brought forward to us.
And then his comments on that. So the complaints, um, were received late last week, I think Thursday, possibly Friday, which is why they ended up on.
Not all of them.
Okay, well, the majority of the complaints, I think we received seven or eight. Um, after the time of the agenda was set and finalized last week.
And that's, that's fine. Those can go to the next meeting and be. Investigated, brought up there. But. There's one. Two, this one was. Was sent out on. Five twenty-three to us. This one was sent out six-two. And I think we need to, we need to take action on this. In a timely fashion.
So the first thing that happens, there's the, uh. Mayor, acting or otherwise, um. Either takes a look at those himself or points someone to do so. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I'll get on it.
Um, on that. Item that you're talking about right now, I'm, I'm kind of confused because. We received, we've received some complaints and not some others. I mean, I, I. I I don't quite understand why some letters are sent out. And, uh, sometimes they're not and we don't address those.
Anything more specific I want to ask you so that I can respond properly?
I, I'm not, I don't know the, it's it's down on. First. First grade. First grade, about the thing across the. Road. That was an anonymous complaint. I didn't think we act on verbal complaints. According to our complaint procedure.
So it it wasn't a complaint so much as it was a comment. And I'm not, I'm not quite sure that the board necessarily, I mean. Does the board want me to relay all comments that are made regarding issues in town? Because if that's something that he would like to be done, that type of is the discussion.
Okay, I, yeah, I would take issue with complaints being, uh, letters being sent. Over a verbal complaint from the town that has. Yes. Well, it was on town. Stationery and I think it was, uh.
Do you have a copy of this letter? I'm really not sure what you're talking about. I, I think you're asking me about this letter. I need to know what letter you're talking about.
Yes, it it it's addressing, it's addressing something about snow plowing and removing the chain across the fence. Of the property or town property.
Okay.
Would the board like me to attempt to answer? But I think the question is here. I'm happy to do so.
I have to answer it now and it's late.
No, it's, so here's the deal. It looks to me like as mayor, I've got a boardwalk to tear out and I've got complaints to investigate. That pretty much covers the next few days.
Yeah, let me, let me just clarify on the process of verbal. Verbal complaints can see by the mayor authorized agent. Must be documented on the same form submitted to the town clerk in forty-eight hours. And then there's step two for record distribution investigation. So I would just say going forward, any verbal complaints need to be put on. Form. And then distributed. Properly. I'm, I'm gonna bring one up in particular because it's not just. Normal ordinance complaints. But it's also sort of E P S complaints. Cause I did have a property owner provide me the email that she was sent. On that environmental health complaint. And on the back, that's on page two of our complaint procedure. The environmental health agent. And the sanitarians, the town of Fitkin are authorized to conduct the preliminary investigation report. And then there's a preliminary report. Of no violation, violation description, and then it's supposed to go through the. Process. And the email went directly to the property on. On that O W B T S complaint without the environmental health board. We're hearing it. That would be the Board of Trustees. I just think when we have procedures, we've got to follow. Like, see. Okay. The, the play procedure that was emailed out to all of the Board of Trustees.
All right. Chad, it looks like you're up with one more public comment.
Public comment. So I I just want to know if we have procedures about complaints. I don't understand how some complaints. Can just be pushed off like under the rug. And some complaints can be dealt with very rapidly. I received a letter from the city of Fitkin asking me to move my equipment off of my property. And that happened in a matter of about a week and a half, two weeks. I never saw a complaint form. I never heard of a complaint form. Was there a complaint form? I think that, um. People kind of pick and choose. What they want to address in this town. That's my public comment.
All right, last one.
I would ask the. Order. List the comments that you have that will be investigated. That were turned in on.
List the comments that you have that will be investigated, that were turned in on time, just the nature of them.
Of the complaints.
I'd like to make a suggestion, uh, first of all, that Sarah post vacancy of the mayor and or trustee. Because we could, as we've been done this past month, filling the mayor with the trustee and then have the trustee capable. So I think it should simply be posted as opening for mayor and or trustee for applications. Uh, secondly, I, I suggest that this is put on our next agenda for action. Thirdly, I want to, and I need to get some information from Utah. And I want to suggest that we delay our next meeting until you're back in town.
Yeah, so you're suggesting that we have our work session and skip the next meeting in July?
Yeah, I'm talking about the next regular meeting.
Uh, for those of you who don't know, I have for over about a year and, uh, finally caved in and said, okay. And Gala has got me a cruise down the Rhine River. So I can sit on the deck and watch the castles go by. So I won't be here. So that's why Ramon brings this up. Um, we could wind up hugely short, I suppose, if we don't get this spot filled. Um.
Neither are you gonna be gone.
July five through July twenty-fourth.
Yes, our, our meeting is scheduled, is it fifteen? Or July fifteenth, but I if enough of, if, I guess the other three of us are gonna be here and can be in attendance, our season for people who are not here all the time is so short. And the, the building season, um, to get anything done in this town, I would prefer to go ahead and meet if the board concurs.
And I guess this is gonna be a question, Mr. Pope. Since we only have one mayor pro temp, if he is gone, who, who runs the meeting if we sign home?
I mean, you guys need to, you guys need to assign, um, as acting mayor now, he needs to sign another mayor pro temp. Just at, at the, at the will of the board.
So can the mayor pro temp assign that person tonight, so that we can go ahead and have that?
Well, when, it's not a unilateral decision of the mayor, it'd be a, a vote of the board, and um, it's a temporary, it's a temporary administrative decision. It's not substantive. It's really procedural. I suppose you could decide to do that if, if, if the mayor pro temp was going to be gone. Um, I don't think it's something that needs necessarily be noticed or discussed because it's not a permanent decision, but um, you could also decide just that. Um, you know, who, who, who's gonna act basically as the chairperson, not necessarily the mayor going forward, but just somebody that could run a meeting and, and the mayor's absence wouldn't hurt anything.
So can we go ahead and, like, could I make a motion, even though it's not on the agenda?
No.
I'm asking the Attorney.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't think it's necessary to make an official, official decision if, um, if, if and when you guys decide to have a meeting and the mayor pro temp's not available or the mayor isn't, and you can decide amongst yourselves at that meeting who want, who's gonna act as the chairperson. Just put it, and then you could just like make it an agenda item for the next meeting.
Well, that is the next meeting, so.
Right, you just, you make it the first, first agenda item, you know, who's, who's gonna, let's discuss the acting chairperson for the meeting, and that way you can properly notice it and, you know, make a decision if you had a quorum.
I'm gonna make this simple for you, Jerah. I'm unavailable from July fifteenth to July twenty-fourth.
So we won't have a quorum, so I guess we can't have a meeting, which is very unfortunate for these people who are trying to get so much done this summer.
I, I propose we hold the meeting on July twenty-ninth. For July.
Will I be back on the twenty-ninth? So apparently I'll be back on the twenty-ninth. You want the chair on there?
Actually, I don't know if we can move the meeting. It's by ordinance when we have the meeting.
Well.
Yeah, let me look what that says.
I, I told Teddy I would stop these trades. Now, roadblocks to.
I, I really didn't know what you said.
What would you guys leave yet, please? I have a very important message to give you, and the reports for the water and roadway will be here the twentieth of June. And so please have all trailers and cars off of the gravel streets that we will be applying the, the, the road grader too. And then even worse than that is better, this June twenty-fifth, the mact chloride will be applied. Protect your vehicles and get them off the gravel roads, please. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
So are we having no meeting in July?
So, um, by the way, the resolution, the meeting is the, the third Monday or Tuesday of the month. I'm on the third, um, if the board can just change the meeting without changing the resolution, and they can't change the resolution without a meeting.
You can have, we can hold a special meeting at any time.
You said.
Well, we got one coming up, so in about ten days, we have a work session.
You could add a special meeting on Monday.
That's still.
That's really not long enough to get much done.
We'll have the answers to the things that we.
Yeah. Okay, well, we are having a special meeting on Monday.
Can, can we do a special meeting on the twenty-ninth?
I'm, I'm not in town.
Oh, you're, sir's not here.
If that changes, I can let you know, but I personally am not.
Okay. If that's, so if it changes so that we can have a meeting in July, we'll hold one. Otherwise, I guess we will not.
First of the month?
We, we got one coming up Monday, but that's a meetings are, I don't know. I, I have moved into a position where I don't have all the answers, and this lady down here, uh, I'm gonna be depending on her for just a little bit, I guarantee you. At this point, it doesn't look like that's a viable option.
It was a draft, so I'm gonna take it back, but I haven't finalized it, I'm also bitching. I need to drop your draft in the month.
Yeah, okay. So have we settled then, Sarah, on unless things change, no meeting in July?
Correct.
Okay. All right, it looks like the business for this evening as much as possible has been concluded. I need a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
We have been moved in seconded. I want to thank you all for your tremendous patience this evening. Have a good night. This most, good meetings adjourned.